On airplane mode and all that good stuff, we can get this started. Take it off internet calling. And wifi and bluetooth and everything else, you ain't gonna worry about it going off. All right, baby shark, that's right. I'd like to welcome everyone to this rainy day that we needed. Got some good rain for the farmers and August twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three commission meeting. And uh, first thing on the. Going to call the order and I'm gonna ask Mr. Commissioner Kelly to do the prayer and I'm asking Commissioner Williams to do the pledge, please.
Everyone stand please.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today, God, with thankful hearts, God, just thanking you and praising you for the many, many blessings. God, we thank you for the rain. And God, we pray for those that may have not got rain, that you would send them rain. But God, we pray in this meeting tonight, God, that us men sitting here that uh, makes the decisions for this county, that you give us knowledge and wisdom. That and be with us, that we would make the decisions to uh, put this county forward. And God, just help each and every one of us in this room tonight to always put you first. And God, we ask that you just keep your protective hand over each and every one here tonight and all their families, bless their homes. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good, call this meeting the order, it's good to live in a country that we can still stand before our flag and. Get the allegiance to those who, and remember those who have served our country to had the freedom to do that, so. I don't take that lightly myself, so. Alright, can I get a motion that we approve the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Do we have any deletions or? Or additions?
Uh, something that came up today, I wanted to add it for discussion under me, Mapleville annexation.
Mapleville annexation, we're gonna add that under Commissioner Williams, please. Commissioner Williams, we get down there, would you please remind me of that, because I don't have it written down.
Yeah, I'll second, Mr. Bone.
Any second?
I second.
Uh, got a motion, Commissioner Bone, a second, Commissioner Williams, any further discussion? Having none, all in favor say aye. Wait a minute.
Do we have the uh, the pay rates on here?
Uh, request approved resolution for emergency call out time pay.
Oh, there is.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Alright, any other further questions, just hopefully none from the audience again, but any. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Got it.
He got it.
Stack of papers he got now.
Alright, we got one uh, agenda, one public comment, and that is Mr. Bonnie L. Van Vincic.
Vicdecton.
Vicdecton. Hi, Ms. Bonnie, what you got?
Gentlemen, I don't know if you can help me, but I want to understand the problems my area of the county, the north end of the county is experiencing with phone service. I live in a rural area and my neighbors understand it might take emergency services a while to get to us. We own guns, we own fire extinguishers, uh, we have garden hoses, we learned basic first aid, we learned CPR. We know that we're on our own when it comes to being a first responder, we are our own first responder. And in emergency, we call nine one one, we call our neighbors, and we do what we have to do until someone gets to us. But lately, we have lost the assurance of being able to make that call for help. Most of us have landlines in our homes and some have had home phones since nineteen eighty, when phone lines were first installed in this area. I also have a cellphone, it's no good at my house. Because like most of Highway one forty-five, there's no cell coverage. We've all had lots of problems with our landlines this summer, outages for days, and the provider has told us. That the system is antiquated, that parts aren't made anymore, and that we are close to repair being impossible. I'm not okay with that, but I understand it. No one uses the system anymore, no one has a landline. And the FCC agrees, ending the requirement for telecom internet companies to provide landlines just last year. But my internet is so unreliable and so bad that I can barely make a wifi call, and that's if it's working. And again, I have no cell signal. The last outage lasted three days and it included both landline and internet, and the closest area with decent cell reception. Was five miles away at Culp's Corner. And as my neighbors sit in their cars in the DG parking lot, trying to make calls and conduct business. They joked, we have no cellphone reception, we have no internet worth a darn. But maybe we can convince the county commission to put in a payphone or an emergency call box. And that's laughable, right? And Mr. Hardy truly, I, I want to thank you, because nine one one got me a road sign, so an ambulance could find us. But there are many days that I couldn't call nine one one if I needed to, or anybody else to help me. And I know that this is something the commission doesn't control. But my neighbors and I, we feel like what services we did have are now being taken away from us and not replaced. And instead of moving forward like the rest of the world, it seems like we're going backwards for years. And worst of all is to see, see that the company who tells me I'll probably lose my landline, who can't give me high-speed internet. Whose equipment is constantly broken and causing outages, this company has applied to ADECA for a grant to expand in Chilton County. And we're probably using my tax dollars to do it. I, I don't know how to stop it. I've been to ADECA meetings about this, right here at Clanton City Hall, and I've been told to go to the ADECA website, check the broadband map and submit corrections. And every correction I've submitted has been denied. I know T-Mobile doesn't service my area, T-Mobile's website says so. I've tried a hotspot, it doesn't work, but ADECA, city down in Montgomery, says I'm wrong. I've called Starlink and been told the waitlist is six months long, there's a five hundred dollar startup fee. And they're not gonna service my area anymore, which Representative Smith confirmed a, a month ago at a commission meeting here. But ADECA says that Starlink's an option for me. I've done speed checks through the ADECA website, they show a download speed of three. For my current provider, okay, I've submitted it to ADECA and been told that that's an acceptable limit. I've contacted Representative Smith, and basically the only answer I've gotten is from a central access standpoint. If you're not one of our members, you're an Alabama power customer. I don't know what else to do. I live within sight of a major state highway running through this county, and there are many days I can't call nine one one. And my neighbor and neighbors and I laugh about asking for a phone booth. But we have to joke and laugh, because otherwise we do nothing but sit and cry. And I'm here tonight to make you aware of this problem and to ask if there's anything you can do to help us. When I spoke with the ADECA reps over at City Hall a few months ago, they directed me to my local government. Who they say should have a working relationship with my telecom and internet provider and be able to resolve any concerns I have.
That's, that's.
That's a bunch of crap.
Well, Mayor Mims got up, Mayor Mims got up and said some words that I will not repeat at that meeting. But, but that's where we stand at the moment.
I mean.
How many other companies did they tell you? I know I saw another one on the map that serviced your area. And how many actually service your area?
CenturyLink, Bright Speed, whatever you want to call them.
That's the only one.
Yes.
Uh, and you're part of the last mile.
I, I guess, I don't know.
I found out, I found out from ADECA this past week. Do you know when you'll probably get internet?
Five years.
Nope. It's coming straight from ADECA's mouth, ten to twelve years. A whole high schoo, whole school generation. Before they get internet the last mile.
So Mr. Williams, my, my child's twenty years old and in college right now. Should, should I tell her that she wouldn't have high-speed internet at her, at her house until she's thirty?
I wouldn't tell her she is.
What should I tell her? Basically, this is why, this is why nobody wants to live here, nobody wants to come back home.
Well, this ain't the, listen, hold on a minute. I, 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 I don't think that's right.
Well, how can you work from home, work from home, Mr. Hardy?
I'll let you have your time, let me have mine. There's a lot of places and across this country that does not have internet, the same problem you have. That's not, does that mean they don't want to go back and live there? If it's internet is the only reason you're living here, then I question why are you living here? If it's just the internet. There's gotta be other things besides internet.
Now, wait a minute, that's a different, that's a different, that's, that argument is like the argument about.
I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to her.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak in a minute.
Okay, I'm not talking to you, I'm just saying, we will try to do what we can, but our hands is tied also.
Well, that's why I also say, I understand this is not your, not your realm.
But you said that people don't want to live here, because we don't have any internet, I mean.
But how do you make a living, you might want to live here, but how do you make a living?
So, we, we have.
I farm.
We have.
I drive a truck. I don't need internet, I farm, I can make a living without internet, some people can, I understand that.
But it's not about making a living, it's, it's about having the nine one one service that you were talking about.
Yes.
That's what we're talking about, we're not talking about.
Yes, okay, let's go back to that, then, what do I do for nine one one?
What kind of phone do you have?
There's, there's no good answer to your question.
No.
The reality is, is that there's governmental money been appropriated to expand broadband. Countrywide, on a federal level, and all of these areas of Chilton County are in proposals. That are being put out to bid to telecommunications companies now. The reality is that even when all of that money is spent, there are still gonna be unserved people in the county. And unfortunately, because where your home is, you're probably won't gonna be one of those people. And secondly, the truth, no matter if you want to hear it or not, is that we have no ability to get whoever your provider is. To provide you better, because they're, they're most likely a privately owned, owned, non-governmentally funded entity. And we could write a letter on your behalf, they're gonna laugh at that. But there's a big part of Chilton County right now that has some of the fastest internet in the United States, thanks to central access. And unfortunately for you, you're in one of those areas that hasn't been serviced yet. I, I, we can, we can blow smoke, but the reality is, we can't help you.
Miss Con, miss.
So, so what about nine one one?
So.
Can I get a cell tower?
Nine one one?
That's.
To, to use a cellphone?
Well, that'd be up to the cellphone company if you get a cell tower.
I think Mr. Randall had a question about.
Verizon and AT&amp;T.
What do you use now?
Verizon.
Have you looked at an in-home booster?
Let me, let me.
Yeah, I don't have a six.
Where, where do you live, ma'am, may I ask? What, where at on one forty-five do you live?
Right there at the.
The north end, above the Watcha Hatch.
County line. Right, run the back, on the right.
Maybe I'm lucky, but I travel one forty-five quite often from here to Columbiana. I've got good old straight talk and I got service anywhere I want to on one forty-five.
I got AT&amp;T, I'll drop that sucker like a dime.
Verizon dies at forty-two and picks it back up when you crawl from river.
Here's something I've thought about just now.
My wife's got Verizon, so I know, but I got straight talk, I got service all the way.
But county officers have what they call an AT&amp;T hotspot, a big one. I've got one that I use for my trucking. Uh, that may be an option, because it does work better than any cellphone that I've seen. You know what I mean, it may be something to look into, maybe we can take a hotspot out there and. Because, see, the deputies have to communicate on their computers and, and radios and stuff like that. And they keep a hotspot on their, in their car, the AT&amp;T, and it's unbelievable how it works, but I ain't gonna say it's gonna work where, where you're at, right there. But it may, something maybe look, worth looking into, to see if that hotspot would work.
We tried hotspots from, well, we tried Verizon and T-Mobile.
This might not be a hotspot, this may be, it's just a big.
That's what it is.
It's a hotspot, AT&amp;T hotspot, it's about that big a round that I've used.
Have you looked at ViaSat?
That's Starlink, isn't it?
No, it's satellite internet, it used to be HughesNet.
HughesNet, that is an option, well.
You can, you can, it's not great, but.
Well, I, I know the service is not that good, but also I don't think, well, the reception is that good for me either.
I think we should, I think you, to try to help, what I can do to try to help you is try to get my hotspot and get it out there to you. And see if that does, I mean, that's an option that you can look at, it's about seventy-nine dollars a month, though, I can tell you. But what I use.
I'm paying a lot more than that right now for internet at home.
Oh, my goodness.
A lot more than that.
And you, you, you know, you're not getting what you're paying for, I understand, and it's frustrating, it's fu, what, you know, what concerns me about.
ADECA tells me to come see you.
Well, I don't know why they, that's pretty good.
We love all the things that ADECA helps.
We don't want to hear what the mayor said about that, but we want to.
They're smart, they're smart, they put it on somebody else.
Well, here's the thing, Ms. Bonnie, the, the main thing concerns me about that, and that's what I'm saying, i- is you not being able to call nine one one. That's, that's what concerns me, but we can't.
See, I have elderly neighbors that. They don't know how to use a cellphone, honestly.
I'll, I'll ask Trey about that, he's on that.
Honestly, they don't know how to use a cellphone.
Alright, see if, there's a, if there's, I'll look, see if there's any other options.
And so there's a reason there's not a cell tower over there, though. There's not enough demand for, for a cell company to put a tower in. And that's part of the problem with living in rural America, whether you're in Chilton County or rural Mississippi or rural Arkansas or rural Wisconsin. There's no, not enough demand to justify putting a tower in.
Well, there's one thing, going back to the ADECA and the internet service. Question I ask, and it's not in the ADECA's plan, wireless. Wireless can be done in this county, whole county in two years, everybody in the county, Perry County did it. Colquitt, Georgia's doing it right now. And Colquitt, Georgia's going along with the system and charge through their water bill. And, but it's, it's not through the grant. There's no grant.
But Commissioner Williams is also working on something for us to see what it would cost as a partner to try to get that in.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm working on that, but I got, trying to find a grant, I'm looking on a grant too, see if I can find one.
Can you get us a cost for stuff like that, in these rural counties?
He's sending me an email, I got the email, yeah.
Some of the reality behind what, because we worked on this when I was chairman to some extent, so I'm a little familiar with what you're dealing with. But some of the reality behind this is that, that, that wireless system is truly kind of the last mile. And you need to let all these other things build out, where you know where you need to focus that. Because a lot of what I, what Perry County has and what I'd looked into was directional, it's more like a microwave type application rather than a, like a cell tower application. So you put these towers at high spots and, and the home will communicate directly off of them. But you need to let all these grants work out, so you know the last mile that didn't get serviced. So you can figure out what's the most cost-effective way to do it, rather than putting it everywhere when it's not the best choice, it's, it's gonna be the second best choice.
Well, you take a population map, and you've got, say, five square miles, and it's got ten thousand people. Eight thousand of those live in a congregated area, the others are sparsely spread out. Nobody's gonna send it to them, and wireless is not gonna come in to spend the kind of money. It would be up to the county to come in if we're gonna do that. But I am trying to get the information.
When you look at that, though, you gotta take the, the co-op members out of that. Because they're gonna provide it to almost all of their members, their goal is for everyone, if I remember what Mr. Smith said.
Every customer.
Then you're left with the other power companies' people, which are a portion of those underserved people. So it, it becomes a, let's figure out how we can do this in an affordable way, once everything else is, maybe not done, but decided.
I, I understand this isn't your thing, I just wanted to make you aware of a, of a serious, serious kind of problem. Because some of my neighbors, they don't know what to do if they lose their, their landline.
Well, your area's not down with one, one eighty-three's got it, area of down near, near Flaxer's got it.
They just don't know what to do if they lose their landline.
I didn't know that, I'm, I'm being honest with you, I didn't know that people still had landlines, I guess.
Oh, yeah. Well, oh, yeah.
The phone companies are not doing any upgrade to their conflict.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, why would they?
If they, if they're not in an area where they can put fiber in, they're just not gonna do it.
How many in this room's got a landline? Four, or two, because they lived, y'all, y'all, three? Look at those who don't. You know what I mean, so, and if you had to do a survey, a lot of people don't have.
I got one in my office, but I don't use it.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our concern. Alright, consent agenda. Gonna approve the minutes, the claims from two thousand twenty-nine and of twenty-three, the sheriff's, new personnel and transit. Uh, moving on from payroll, road department requests a resolution of overtime call-out pay. Commission, and we're moving on to the next page. Lease agreements, line item transfers. And end of consent agenda.
We approve the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion, Commissioner Williams, a second, Commissioner Parnell, any questions? Having none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, have a re, need a resolution, uh, a commi, I'm sorry, commission reports.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, I'd like to request a resolution to purchase an ad in the Chilton County membership directory, through a half or a full page.
I'll make a, a resolution, or propose a resolution, that we buy half a page in the Chilton County membership directory.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner Parnell, and a second, Commissioner Bone, any further question?
Uh, need to be noted, fair bet, this is part of the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah. But, alright, anybody, anything else? Having none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, the county board of legalization nomination, we have, uh, three, Richard Lawrence, Hal Harrison and Peggy Hall, this is the second meeting. Uh, but this is due September first.
First of all, I'll make a resolution that we suspend the meeting rules to go ahead and vote on these appointments.
My second.
Got a motion, Commissioner, uh, Parnell and a second, Commissioner Bone, that we suspend the rules, and all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a resolution that we appoint the, the, uh, Mr. Richard Lawrence, Hal Harrison and Ms. Peggy Hall.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to appoint Richard Lawrence, Hal Harrison, Peggy Hall to the Board of Legalization. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Um, I'd also like to request a resolution to request formal proposals from local real estate firms to list and sell our county properties that these are listing.
I move that we ask for proposals, formal proposals from local real estate firms to list and sell our excess county properties.
Got a motion, Commissioner Williams and a second, Commissioner Kelly to list for the local real estate companies?
Local is in.
Local, Chilton County local.
Anybody that's in the member of the chamber, which would be all the Realty South, exit Realty, all, all those.
Yeah.
Anybody that Miss Sylvia can get a, a name and address.
I'd say if you, if you live in Chilton County, you're a local, so, and you've got a license. Huh?
Though Joe, he could list it.
Yeah.
You were ever familiar?
Yeah. Got a motion, a second, any further question? Having none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioner, I got down to Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Bone.
No, sir.
Commissioner Headley, Headley. Commissioner Kelly.
Yes, sir, I got one question, I forgot to edit a while ago, I'm sorry. Got a phone call this afternoon, wanna know if we could put some slower speed limit signs on eight thirty-five, they was asking for ten mile an hour.
You got a dirt run?
It's down close to the river. I think we need to table that and go look at it also.
Let our engineer look at that, we don't need approval nut tonight, also, we didn't discuss it in the work session, so moving on. Mister, if you'll take note of that, Mr. Kelly, if you can get with him, make sure, we'll move on with that.
Alright.
Alright. Commissioner Mims is not present, Commissioner Parnell?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Williams, if you have something on your agenda.
Uh, and some of y'all may know more about this, I just learned about it today. Mapleville is planning on annexing the west side of eighty-two. The Chevron and everything over there. That's gonna affect our sales tax. They're gonna take half our sales tax from those businesses if, if they annex.
Can I comment?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, the city of Mapleville for a number of years has been pursuing a grant to bring sewage all the way down twenty-two to the, the log mill in Mapleville. And the last I heard, the mayor felt like he had had, he had a grant secured to help him do that. And when they brought sewage, they were gonna be able to take it to that intersection of eighty-two. Which is gonna cause that, that interstate to, that intersection to develop. Um, when Fred Crawford was here, they had a hotel that was wanting to locate there, and a fast food restaurant. And they were waiting on sewage, so I would tell you that most likely, even though we'll lose the, the upstep or upgrade for, uh. On the sales tax, there's gonna be more revenue brought in there over the next few years if they go forward with that.
Well, I was thinking about a trade. We're keeping up three of his roads that he annexed in the city, you know?
Well.
We'll step back, he takes his roads, we don't have to keep them up anymore. He's getting revenue off of, after all, anything else.
If he gets a, a twenty-room hotel in there, and a, a fast food restaurant, and they, they've got a couple that want to be there, because. Between, um, South Coast Paper and West Frazier, they have a number of people that are in hotels in Chilton County every night. And five, seven years ago, whenever Fred was here, they had committed to reserving a certain number of rooms a week between the two of them. That was gonna kind of make it feasible for a small hotel. But I, I would tell you, be gentle, because that, that could be very beneficial for the county.
Well, as long as he puts out all the facts, and it's gonna be beneficial, I wouldn't oppose it. But if it's not gonna be beneficial to that extent, and we gotta still pay for those three roads upkeep on them, then I'll, yeah, I won't be too gentle.
How much revenue would we be losing if nothing comes in?
Oh, I don't know, I just, like I said, I just found this out, we'd be losing, uh, if, half the sales tax. Because then, and once it comes into corporate limits, it goes to one cent to the county.
Uh, well, you answered my mind about that motel, you really had me, well, I was really thinking about that. I was like, who's gonna put a motel in Mapleville?
It's like five or ten people at night are typically there for some reason, it, between those two men.
I mean, I, I'd love to see, I mean, but you gotta, you gotta, gotta remember too, when, there's one thing, if you're about to put the motel in Mapleville, you're gonna get lodging tax on the other too.
And I'm not saying this won't happen, I'm saying Fred had some other.
If it comes, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's been a long time ago, but I'm not talking about.
Alright, well, that's something to consider.
And there's one other thing that I forgot, Randall reminded me of this, when he said at Canter Road forty-one, had a couple requests for reposting the no trucks. Because that's where the chief puts them off, when there's a wreck on sixty-five, puts them down forty-one.
Is that, is that a no-truck route that was been approved by this commission?
At one time, it was posting no trucks, I don't know.
There's a lot of roads posting no trucks, but they ain't approved by this commission.
I can't answer that, I wasn't here as long as you were. All I know is the signs were up there, and, uh, there was a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit on the other end at Love's End. And I can promise you, that's seventy mile an hour racetrack. I had got run over with my son the other day, coming down that road.
Well, let me tell you, when you. You can put a sign that says thirty-five, we're gonna lock you up and don't throw paper out the trash, but.
They still gonna do it.
They still gonna do it, it's a people problem, it's not a sign problem.
Well, at that point, you got lost.
It's a people problem. Alright, anything else?
Nope.
Alright, uh, I just want to give a, hello, cut. I'm there, yeah. I want to give a, a thank you and an update on our fairground project, uh, Mr. Heath, can you come up here and start, I'll butcher this up also.
He just put you on the spot.
Uh.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we, I want to congratulate, I want to thank, uh, the, those, and, and Commissioner Williams was sick, uh, had to call in and. Uh, th- those who come out and sacrifice their time to help us haul, we hauled about a hundred and almost a hundred and sixty loads of dirt Saturday. Within an eight-hour period, we was finally working the five, we done so good in that eight-hour period. Uh, the, they're starting to really come to shape with the, with the fairground, which still got a little ways to go. We did do a good presence there, we had a joint working effort with the commission and the employees and the city of Clanton to do this workday. I think it is very successful, I'd like to see another in the future to go ahead and that, knock this out, but, uh, I had a really good time myself, and I'm sure you guys did.
I didn't have a CB, so I couldn't talk.
Yeah, we, we didn't get, we put Joseph in a CB, all he could do was listen, and we did talk about it, but, uh, just thank you and, and thank you, uh. Heath for organizing this and letting us be a part of it.
I want to thank you commissioners, uh, I think this fairgrounds area is gonna be very beneficial to the county, to the city of Clanton. And, uh, you're right, coming out, uh, so we wouldn't take away from roadwork, came out on a Saturday. Uh, had several commissioners show up to run dump trucks, uh, I want to thank also the, uh, road department employees who were able, willing to come out on their Saturday. Uh, I want to thank the city for letting us, uh, uh, use and some of their field material from their yard. And I want to thank Matt Epperson, our assistant, for putting in, uh, the rotation, I think everything run very smoothly, so that was, uh, we enjoyed it as well, thank you so much.
We had a, we, it was a good work environment, working with these other employ, uh, us, the commission, working with employees, had some good conversations with them. And, uh, so just want to, want to thank you guys for that, and thank you for all you do.
Can I say something?
Comment one thing.
Yes, sir.
You weren't here last night, but I would love for you to take some time and sit down with Ms. Pam. She has some ideas about the board of education property out there and some things that they're pursuing that we might could work together on.
Yeah, I think the, hadn't the mayor been talking to Cory about it?
Um, he told me that he called and asked him for a parking lot.
Yeah.
Space today, but that's the first he's heard.
Oh.
But we're going to a grant class, and we have incorporated that, and we have a grant that we're writing, and we're looking to put up pavilions. So that the, if they can have things out there, we're trying to.
Right.
Release from the innovation kitchen, because Auburn owns that property equipment. So we've been working on that, and we want to expand it, so, I mean.
It could be a good joint effort.
Good idea.
It could be a city-county board of education.
Well, they got the.
Work better for everyone.
If we could get parking over on that property over at the board of education, we could, the fairground could be a lot bigger, which we're got, we done some little bit of talking today. And, uh, working with a guy that's maybe do a layout of what this may look like.
But he needs to know what their vision is.
Right.
Because those things, it, that, that pavilion, if it's built right, it's gonna have to be on their property.
Right.
But it could be in a way where we could have a, uh, a joint use of it all, and it could be used during fairtime.
I said last night, we was gonna come beyond, because we need. Said last night, we was gonna come to y'all because we need y'all's good graces and letter of recommendation on this grant that we're working on.
Right.
Try to get the mayor and y'all sit down with him and.
Okay. I'm, I'm excited about it, I'm wanting this fairground to really, I mean, I'm telling you something, that's, that's my, I have made that my passion project.
I want a spring fair there.
I would love to have a spring fair, so, all right.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to say one thing about the work in Saturday. I was really impressed with the employees that's been driving the trucks. I don't really know what I was expecting, but I wasn't expecting a clean truck that I got, that thing was spotless inside. So I want to, I want to thank the employees for taking care of our equipment.
Well, they, we got, we got a couple guys that come in at four o'clock in the morning sometimes and wash their trucks, and that, you could tell that there's, they, they take pride in these equipment. Uh, the one I drove, just let you know, just, I'm gonna go ahead and clear the air about the guy that put on social media, said Jimmy Hardy, uh, wh, it took me two, ten minutes to do what you undone. I don't know if you know that Heath, but, uh, the, the guy that I drove, and he don't mind me mentioning his name, was Jack Cooper, I drove his truck. And, and Jack's always messing with people, so I turned Jack's, uh, windshield wipers wide open, his radio wide open, his CB wide open, his heater wide open, and I slid his sh, uh, chair, all, his seat all the way up under the steering wheel, and tied the, um, the, uh, seatbelt around it for him, so when he went to work Monday, he would feel comfortable, so. Motion Commissioner Kelly, the second Commissioner Williams, all in favor say aye. Y'all have a great week.